And there is nothing impossible with God.
And so the great thing of God is salvation.
And when you see in 2 Samuel. And when you look into chapter 7 verse 23. And here David says and what is a great thing the Lord had done unto the people of Israel. And what is a great thing? And so the Lord had done a great thing and terrible for their land before the people that rid him out of Egypt. And so you changed your people as your people and for this I give gratitude. And the Lord saved you and exalted you and given you the excellency in the nation and village and that it is a great thing of God. And we can see and what is a great thing the Lord done to the people of Israelites in Deuteronomy chapter 4 verse 32 onwards. And so and when you search over the world and the Lord did not do any great things for the people of Israelites more than anything in all ends. Verse 32. And since the day the Lord created man upon the earth and asked from the one side of heaven unto other and whether there had been any such thing the great thing and had been heard like it. And so 10 plagues of pestilence came to the people of Egypt. The Bible says and they were all the signs and wonders. In 444 of Deuteronomy we can see this. Also it is said that temptation signs and wonders. And also it is said that and by a war by mighty hand by stretched out arm and the great terrace it was mentioned. And so he made the throne of Egypt to shake. And all the magicians and they were templed. And we can see the finger of the Lord evidently. And the magician could not stand before the miracles. And the Lord killed the firstborn of Egypt. And there was the pillar of fire. And there came a pillar of cloud. And red sea was divided into two. And the people rescued out. And all the enemies were destroyed. And the Lord shivered the manner and finished them. And the water came out of rock. And what does it matter or what does it mean inside? And the day God created man upon the earth and asked from one side from heaven to the earth a great thing the Lord has done and that is a miraculous thing. And these are the things the Lord done and for therefore salvation. And so to save and to save you the Lord can kill any person. And to make you to come to the salvation or to save you the Lord will cast any person out. And for you to be healed and the Lord is well ready to kill any number of persons. And looking unto the speed of the ministry in my initial days and the Lord got ready to kill many persons. And to get speed and to get growth in my ministry he said that the Lord is able to ready to destroy any persons. And the Lord is fighting with many to save you. And these are the signs, wonders and miracles and great things done for your salvation. But after when you come out of this path and unto the salvation. And what is a great thing at present the Lord is doing. And the Lord has chosen you. And the Lord is speaking to you. And the doctrines the Lord is giving at present is a great thing for you. Verse 33. Deuteronomy chapter 4 verse 33. And right today the Lord is speaking to us. And those who say that I have a personal church and relationship with God the Lord is speaking today for me. And this is a great thing of God. And devil is speaking. And spirit of your speaks. And the spirit of witchcraft speaks. And the fallen power speaks to us. And the spirit of depression speaks to us. And spirit of suicide speaks to us. And this is not important. And the Lord who created heavens and heavens is speaking to you. The one true God or only true God is speaking to you. And almighty God is speaking to you. And so when the Lord speaks out of fire and the Lord asks questions and is there any people like this? And not only that. And the Lord can perform miracles for your salvation. And you can get sometimes revelations, visions and word of God. And what verse 36 says. And you are seeing the doctrines and this is the lofty experience in Christian life. And the gospel is different from doctrines. And gospel sets free a man. And doctrines makes a man perfect. And gospel gives a man a salvation. And doctrines gives a man a holiness. And what is the power of gospel? And it drags a man or draws a man out of sin. And what does the doctrine do and it cleans the person? 15 3 of John. And what is and the important thing of the doctrine is and when the person is moving it makes him clean. And the doctrine must glow like rain in church. In the church and where the doctrines close not like rain and the church cannot be established. And to whom the Lord gives doctrine. And to whom the Lord reveals a doctrine. And they that forget all need will know. And what does it mean? And not for the babes. And they that come to the next step to the word of God. And so when the child is born and they feed milk. And when one time comes and weans milk. And this is a practice in the world. And what does the thing in the Bible? And so for a child to forget or wean milk and it take a function. Because the child crosses with stage. And so when Isaac weaned and that kept our conduct at great feast. And what does it mean? And you should not stand with the gospel and Jesus saves and delivers and heals you must come to the next step of doctrine and that is a strong meat. And that's what we can see in Hebrews. And Hebrews chapter 5 verse 13 and 14. And so the strong meat and that it is the discerning power to identify good and evil and that is the doctrine. And so we need doctrines. And we need sound doctrines. And doctrines unto godliness. And the Lord who performs signs and wonders and when they came out of Egypt on the way and the Lord practiced them all the laws and statutes to follow. And what do we understand from this and who is like unto our God? If the Lord performs great things and you were often once and the Lord gave you houses and everything and that is a great thing of God. And you were alone but the Lord gave you houses and gates and that is a great thing of God. You are poor the Lord changed you a rich man and that is a great thing of God. And these are all the things unto earthly things. And next what is the earth's spiritual thing? And discompleting all your enemies and preserve you. And the Lord conquered your all your battles. And this is one part. And the Lord saved your soul. And deliverance from sin. And deliverance from curses. And help you to obey to doctrine of baptism. The fire from heaven says that the Lord gave you anointing. And with anointing and the Lord spoke to you through many verses. And these are all the things the Lord hath done great things for you. And these are pastimes. And now the Lord says and the Lord is doing or does great things. Book of Job. 5 verse 9. Even right today the Lord is living a work with life. And the Lord said I did and I am living already. And the Lord did not do only the pastimes also he is doing in present time. And the Lord not only done to the people of Israelites he is doing to me also. How many can say this? And the Lord is doing everyday and the things that the great things unsearchable and marvelous things without number. And what does it mean? And right today and the Lord when you lift you up or exalt you that is a great thing of God. Verse 10 says. And so and the Lord sit on high those that are low and those bound that are exalted to safety. It is a great thing of God to change your lowly estate. And you were under dust. And you were under the dawn. But the Lord helped us to sit with princes. And he made us to sit with the saints of God. And whose blessed thing it is. And by grace or graciously the Lord has given this excellent experiences which our relatives our friends did not receive. And the Lord is sufficient for you in everyday life and that is a great thing of God. And you know how many enemies rose against us. And so you would have an outwardly and outwards enemies and you were crying and shouted and lamented and cried and fasted for them. And but there are many invisible enemies and powers and they are working against you and your children. But what the Lord is doing for us. And the Lord brings all the enemies that you can see and destroy and he is destroying all the powers that you cannot see that is invisible to our eyes and he is destroying them. And what does a cat do? And when it was laying its egg in. And it will go and take the mice. And taking it. And it will not kill it. And so it will not kill and provide the food. And so it makes half dead. And it gives to the young ones. And so now and they will struggle and they will eat it. And this is the concept of God the Lord does for us. The problem that you are not able to encounter the Lord breaks into pieces and brings unto your feet to crush it. And that is a plan of God. And so when you when you get the fury and zeal of God and the Lord brings the enemies to destroy. And the Lord revealed a matter to me in a hysterically. And so the Lord will not test a person beyond the limit or extent. And also said that when the Lord permits such trials in their life and he gives them a way to escape. And so we are reading the Lord will have or keeps us a loop line. But we are not able to encounter these problems and trials. And so one said and 24 hours Jesus was crucified and hung on the cross but I am hanging on the cross for 24 years. And that is a wrong word. And even when you hang on the cross was 110 years and it is not equal to the time that Lord hung on the cross for 24 hours. And why you are encountering or when you are hitting the problems. And so the limit of measure and that it was made in. And so the limit of measure it's your calling. And that is a vision of God. And that is a calling of God. And that is a plan of God concerning you. And the limit or measurement of your measure is that your calling. When you see. And when they become a police or when they come to the military when they become officer they will give them a training. And how they got training when they came for the training and so even when they come to the officer level and they must pass through. Even in the ministry he has this. And after serving the God for 20 years or 24 years and they will be promoted as assistant pastor and that is the opposite training. And I got such training. And I got training from seven centre pastors. And assistant pastor will not have any freedom or independence and even the young brothers or in charge brothers they have. And I had training from seven pastors. And only after getting perfection I came to the next posting. And so every pastors were in different designs. And so I have to pass through every designs. And likewise in the military also they have training for the officers. And when brother Pedro said. And there is officers training academy at mount. And so from Changel Pet to Mount they must run. And what is their age? At the age of 45 and from north and they will deliver them to the Saint Thomas Mount and from Changel Pet and they have to run to Saint Thomas Mount. And there is no mercy for them. And when you faint on the way and they will give you water and they will wake you up again you must run and so only then and they will give you the fitness. The Lord is taking us in this path. And the Lord led Jove in a beautiful way. And it is not a normal thing the Lord has done great things for us. And everyday the Lord is taking over. And the Lord. And they that are poor on mount the Lord lifts them. Even today the Lord does this. If the Lord wants to do great things in our life it is essential for us to surrender and submit. And the Lord does marvelous thing without number and also unsearchable and great things. And so the coming days and will be the great things for the Lord to manifest and to put forth in our life. May God's holy name be glorified. And the Lord will do. How many of you believe this? Now let us come back to Joel chapter 2 verse 21. And so also and when we are giving the thanks and we got this word and also the prophecies and two or three will utter these words. And when they are uttering these words and the people will rejoice and clap their hands and sing with joy and so what is a great thing the Lord does in our life? And so what is the law what is the thing the Lord is going to do in the land in your future in your life? And fear not o land. Be glad and rejoice. For the Lord will do great things. And what is the right meaning of it? There are five things. And first thing and the Lord sends former rain and latter rain. And second and third thing and the Lord fills your bounds and also the oil overflows. And your bounds will overflow. And oil overflow and run it over. And so what you have lost in your life and what you have gone away and it will come back to you in double fold. And you can see on. And the fourth thing and my people never be ashamed. And so you can see this in book of Joel chapter 2 verse 21 to 26. And so if the Lord is doing a great thing for a person the Lord gives him former rain and latter rain. And so in man's life there are two rain or needed. And one is former rain and another is latter rain. On the day of Pentecost the former rain descended into the house. The anointing in the days of the coming of the Lord is the latter rain. And the days when you got saved and that is anointing call a former rain. The anointing descending on the days of the coming of the Lord a rapture is the latter rain. And what does the 23rd verse says? And the former rain moderately he will cause to come down for you the rain the former rain and the latter rain in the first month. And right anointing is the great thing of God. And so he will give you the former rain cause to rain moderately. The path that you go. The paths that you are living. The problems that you encounter. And all the sickness that is encountered you. And evil spirits are working against your soul. According to the path that you go and the Lord gives you anointing. And that it is a great thing the Lord is going to do further. How many are going to get this experience today? And Joel chapter 2 verse 21 is the real allegues. And we do not know what is the thing inside it. And so what is the expectation of the Lord doing for the great thing is that you must expect a former rain from him. And when we say anointing it must completely or it must continue within. In some places rain falls and we all know. Also in some places and there occur floods. Also we can hear some and in many places and there were heavy floods. In some places it results. In some places there were heavy rain. In some places it is not like this. And so when he says that and the ground were rent. Can you understand? And the clouds are rent and then and there itself the whole water falls into it. And today we can see the farmer and he sows the seed. And he was watering. And when you ask them. And used to say it rains and I will take the harvest. And that it is the latter. And so and when one waterfall and when one rain comes and even it irrigates and he can take the reap or harvest. And that it is a latter rain. And the anointing and it must rent the heavens and must come down. And when the right anointing descends into conoverton and we can shake well. But many are not coming to the point of anointing. It's not like that. And that is very important time. You and God. And this is the time for you to come unto God and get the power and must crush and the angler and line. And what is the secondary thing? And the flows shall be full of wheat. And the Lord will meet all your needs and abundance. And getting extra of money. And telling that give today I'll give it tomorrow. And so and there is no rotation in the blessings of God. Can you understand? It is not the plan of God to exchange from here and to transfer here and there. And so many are thinking like this it's wrong. And so the prophet and he got money. And so the Lord give him the blessings. And the Lord said and first you must sell it and you settle all your money and then you can live. And so there is no rotation in the Bible and in the truth of God. And it is said that and your flows shall be full of wheat. And it is very needful for us. And the Lord must meet all your requirements. That's what I am telling from beginning. And you must receive both the earthly blessings and spiritual blessings. And being a great saint and servant of God and a believer and when you are getting or borrowing money there is no use. At the same time when you have all comfortableness and luxuriousness with all car and houses when there is no divinity in you and there is no use. Both are like attracts and you have to balance and maintain in a right way. And the fats shall overflow with wine and oil. And after coming to this religion and we and you must be like a wine and which shows and it gives the comfortableness heart and also oil which shows freshness.
एंड आफ्टर कमिंग तू दिस रिलिजन एंड वी एंड यू मस्त बी लाइक डी वाइन एंड विच शोस एंड इट गिव्स डी कंफर्टेबिलनेस हार्ट एंड अलसो ऑयल विच शोस फ्रेशनेस इन योर फेस
से तुपोना मारी एवर कुड़ा
एंड यू शुड नॉट कम लाइक डी डेड वाइन
वो तले नला यन्ने अत्याची
एंड यू हैव तू ऑयल अप्लाई ऑयल इन योर हेड
नाइट तकलम ओर नालावध शेव पनी कुंज मरिया दया कुंज ओर ओर मनिशन मारी आवध वान सोलर
आई एम टेलिंग डेट आत्लीस ऑन संडे यू मस्त शेम एंड कम लाइक डी मैन
ओर नालावध मुंज मुंज मोहक तकलुवे मोहक तकनाड़ी ले पारे यप्पी रुके करदीमा रुके इदला कुंज अलाका शेव पनी कथर डिया आले तुकपोरो अंडा वर पाक्कपोरोन निचे तोड़वा
एंड यू मस्त वाश योर फेस एंड सी योर फेस इन डी मिडिंग एंड यू मस्त मेक श्योर डेट यू कमिंग तू डी टेंपल ऑफ गॉड एंड कम विथ क्लीन
ओर तर सोनारे
वन से डिस लाइक दिस
राबोजन एडकर लाल मीस एड़त उंगल कुड़करन
एंड से डेट एंड वैनली दे डी गॉड गिविंग कम्युनिट मस्त टेक डी मॉर्निंग
आवे नव वच्चीट पोरा या उड़िया सोन
आई से डेट हिम कीप एंड यू लीव
इल्ल राबोजन उड़ीकम्बोध इन डी मीस रसतुकला वर्ध इधर पक्ति विरती की माराना से यल्ला अप्पन नानु योश ओग इधुर सत्य तेरिया उक्कर
एंड वन से तू मी लाइक दिस एंड दे डी आर हैवी मोस्टेज एंड सो
एशुविन रत्ततल इधु पड़दे तवर कुट्टाम अब्दी
एंड से डेट एंड इट इस रोम ऑफ फॉल्ट एंड इट इस फॉलिंग इन तू डी ब्लड ऑफ जीसस
वोनक यन्ने मोहक कलयुग डुबोनो नी देवन डी समुगत के वर्मोद राजा मारी वर्ण
एंड
राजा मारा राजा दी राजा मारी तिरिंबी पोन
एंड ऑयल शोस एंड गिव्स डी कॉन्टिनेंट्स फेस एंड सो यू मस्त कम इन तू डी प्रेसेंस ऑफ गॉड
कथर डिया आले तुकपोरो मारंगल इन डी सोन बोलद नान अब्दी रुन पोगा नामला वार अब्दी यस रुल कथर डिया आले तुकपोरो मिन डी सोन बोलद मगिलची आयरन
एंड आई वास ग्लैड व्हेन दे से डेट तू मी तू कम तू डी हाउस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड
And you do everything for God in your life every day.
Allah ka kulichiparabti make up pottu enelamo ungalaka enelamo pandriyenge decent designa diet control vichikiringe idathan jappuringe adathan oodutringe inke dam poringe idalala ungalaka shiriyenge idupogha ungalakku kudumuthu kaga pilligalaka alayiringe thiriringe kasta podreinge naaya payaa olakkiringe idukamati la kattaraka kattarim seviyinka
And you are doing certain things for you, you are making up yourself designing, you are laboring hard, you are moving around here and there, in midst of all these things, you serve God.
Inneka kattar onaka adutthu kodukara vaartai enna?
And so what is the word of God the Lord gives you today?
Ah, nindru parugirun endu solugirudhamaatramala.
Not only the Lord says, "Stand and see."
Eremiya 33, 3.
Thirty-three, three of Jeremiah. And here after, the Lord is going to make you know a greater mighty things with thou knowest not. The Lord did.
Sehiraa.
The Lord do.
Seivaa.
The Lord will do.
Seidharade nindru parka poor, sehirade nindru parka pooraaai.
You are going to stand and see what the Lord is going to do for you.
Inimel kattaru adutthu onaka kodukara promise enna na inimel naan nindru onaka sehirakariyengale naan onaka arivipen.
And also the Lord says, "And I will make you know and what are the things I am going to show you and know for you."
Ananeni enenoki koopadu.
But you must call unto me.
Inneleru onga prayer lifea developpadi.
And right today onwards, you develop your prayer life.
Ilavta renewpadi.
Or you renew your prayer life.
Koopadunga nightla, orisalala thooka arlan nee jebikavaraang, enak aachirima arkaadapkavi namakuthooka orudhim, thooka varalaga karana, sandoshamaan seilacha, ogandene nisila? Jebikalaala?
And some are coming unto me and asking to give them a good sleep at night. If you are not able to sleep, then stay and pray.
Nekolandepathongala ondesologa, nightla ida aludukiteeruke, enak oru oru tradu, ayoyenak veni dana kolandiyakaata, nightla mulichirukana naladhe onee itravasama ni jebikala, jandu jebikavikiborare.
And they deliver a child. And used to say, "They cannot sleep at nights, it's good for you and you can watch and pray at night."
Nightla aludukana enna karnao?
If it cries whole night, what is the thing?
Thaayee naan parandavutte, nee ipolade enakaka melangal poduvayaa. Abudana?
And so the meaning is, "And mother, I was born," and from right today, you bend your knees and pray.
Onnumariyada enni, inda olagatilni jennipithavutta, ini naan padapugara paadugalaka ipolade ka, ipolade unbillaka enesi? Yes, abudana, onaka onbillaka enesi? Alun, abudana?
And you created me which I know not, and you have to pray for me from today. And so this is what Jesus said, "Pray for you and your children."
Varanda oranee oni thooka odamaakirudh, ini varanda oranee nesiyo thooka oduma? Odada?
And so it would not leave you until you pray and okay for it.
Ah, nige jebikino.
And you must pray.
Bible solugirudh, enenoki koopadu, appodu naan periyakariyengale onaka arivipen.
The Bible says, "You call unto me and I will make you know a great things."
Allajommanudung, pentegoskarana mari jabangpontraman mundillan kadeyada ane ippon pentegosamari vari thookaraman yonume kadeyada.
And so on the former days we can see, and there is no other person like Pentecostal people, but we cannot see such person at present, those bleak like Pentecostal people.
Naanu orisagurnu, oru pastor, karla poyikitturukko.
And myself and brother, and I were going in a car.
Na southlalkum, Chennai venditirettenbaro.
And so when I was at south, and so from Chennai we were returning to.
Pinnal oru viswasiyim, pastor, flataidanga, tuingidanga.
And the believer and pastor and the God stepped at that side.
Naanu munnal ogandu tuingiditha vara, vittu vittu tuingiditha vara.
And I am also sleeping and brain.
Ipore tolla vandini kikidina.
And so it came and stood near toll.
Toll kaskuduttha.
And so they gave money in the toll.
Toll kaskudutthe, avant kasa thiripitharadukulna, ivan tuingidanga driver.
And so the driver slept and before he gives money in the toll.
Avan allo allo, naan apipakare, engal tuingita, avan kasa netithe, and the toll building kodukara. Apadhan patha, ini ivan whatna na, motthama ellargun tol vangiravendita.
And so if he drives a car further and without that, and we have to get toll for everyone.
Abba vandini padu, naamathra.
And I said him to stop the vehicle and I got team.
Inneka ondu namalanga avva, patte avva, bayankaramaavu patte, damal, ingaikira soundamari, endu oru nee vichamata. Avva lo kattudu, kattu kattudu, adhuli alaha thookara. Avila naranje damal dimal idikara, adhuli thookara. Apadhan yosse, ivan office lapana udai prithan thookava?
And they are singing songs louder, and so they playing music, and even in midst of that sound, and they were sleeping, I thought that even in the office.
Enenoki koopadu.
And you call them to me.
Naan onaka, on arivikettaada kariyengale naan onaka arivika kathirukkaran.
And so I will make you know the things that you know not and you unsureable.
Ni ariyadu, periyakariy, ettaadhumana kariyengalala onaka kaga naan soludhakke waitpanniyidurukkaran. Ni enenoki koopadu.
I am waiting to give you the things that show forth, that know not and mighty things, and you must call unto me.
Ande enna periyakariyengale arivipen.
And what is the thing that I will show for the great things?
Onnu ungalakku rite.
And one about your house?
Endavudhu ungalakku sugathke rite.
And secondly about a healing?
Mundraavudhu ungalakku varungalate kuri.
And second, thirdly about your future?
Nalaavudhu ungalakku manneppi kuri.
And fourthly about your things?
Aindavudhu ungalakku varungalam menme kuri.
And fifthly about the excellency in future?
Aravudhu ungalakku aanikuriya valkay kuri.
And sixthly about your spiritual life?
Elavudhu solradha, naan ellathiyu onaka arivichadala nerevetruven solradha.
Seventhly, the Lord says, "And I will accomplish and what I have make you to perform."
Nige akkelavula vasanagala ninga pathingana?
And so when you read the verses below.
Ah, Eremiya 33, 4, veedugale kuri, abdine soliruk.
And so thirty-three, fourth verse says that concerning your houses.
Aravasana solugirudh, ungalakku sugathke kuri.
Sixth verse says about your health.
Adutthu elavasana, naan ungalakku sirairipan neekuven, varungalam onaka mahimayaamaru, ungalakku future kuri.
Seventh verse says, "I will turn your captivity and you will have a bright future."
Etavasana onaka manneppu undun solradha.
Eighth verse says, "And I will pardon you and give you a forgiveness."
Ombadavasana, kattar enna solradha, unek kirtiim pulchimaan naamataporavo, futuree mahimayaamataporan.
Ninth verse says, "And I will give you praise, honor and name, I am going to change your future bright."
Padinora vasana solugirudh, inimel ona vittla geetha sattam, kalipin sattam, magilchin sattam, manavalanini sattam, manavatini sattam, seynagalin kattari thudhingaliguradha sattam, kattar nalavar, avarkiruvay endru muladiguradha sattata, ona vittla naan donikaponnaven solradha.
And the Lord says, "I am going to tingle the voice of joy, voice of gladness, and voice of bridegroom, voice of bride, and voice of them that sees and praise the Lord of hosts."
Summa periyakariyam, periyakariyam, enna oni ni vaduka, leliya solirada? Ennaniguradha inneki taon ona valkile kattar velipadutara.
Just simply when you say, "The Lord is doing two great things," and it is not a thing, and the Lord is going to reveal and what are the great things in your life.
Inimel kattar onkariyengale arivipen, ona vittakuri thonaka pesaporare, ona kudumbata pathi pesaporare.
And so the Lord is going to speak about your family and your house and family about you.
Vadyipatturukkana, belavina patturukkana, enakade vadyisogamagaliyane solriye, onakkana naa saukkettiyo, aro kettiyo, varapanduvay.
And so you are saying that, "I am sick and I am under the diseases," and the Lord says, "And I will restore your health and healing."
On sirairipanamachi, munni irundadu bolonakonduruvay.
"I will change your captivity and return on how you were in the former days."
Ona naan sutthikarichu oni manneka poorain.
"I am going to sanctify you and pardon you."
Adhumaathramala.
Not only that.
Enakku pogalchiya, enakku magilchiyanak kirtiaga, pogalchiaga, mahimayaaga naan ona mataporan.
And I am going to make you my name, a joy, a praise and honor before all the nations.
Inimel onakul enna sattangakko?
And so what will be the voice here after?
Kalipin sattam.
And there will be the voice of rejoicing.
Padinora vasana, vasinga? Enna inimel ona vittla, ay, ooh, yaada, odaa, chanda, pathranga, thran, damal, dimal, grain, thalli odhradha, edhati, abdhalakke padad. Periyakariyengaladha, adhela, idhram periyakariyam.
And this is the great thing. And what are the voices will be heard?
Kalipu, magilchi, manavalanini sattam, andoronda peswar, ni manavatiaaranda, manavatini thiripi peswar. Manavatini sattam, manavalanini sattam, kattar nalavar, kattari thudhingal, avarkiruvay endru muladhi, stotra baligale kondurudhadi sattam, idhuda ona vittla, ona valkile inimel kakano?
And here after, your house in your life, and this will be the voice, the voice of joy, the voice of gladness, the voice of bridegroom, and the voice of the bride, if you are a bride, and you can hear the voice of the bridegroom. And also you will say, "Praise the Lord of hosts, for the Lord is good and is mercy and you read forever."
Padinalavasana solugirudh, indanal vaartegalai, naan onaka neravetchuva.
And verse fourteen says, "And I will fulfill the good thing of promises."
Naatkalvarum.
The days come.
Naan ennal vaarteen, naan neravetchuva.
"I will perform the good thing for you."
Idhuda anga kattar, ni jebichena, kattar onaka velipaduti, adhene neravetchuva.
When you pray, and the Lord will reveal it and will fulfill it.
Kattaridya parushutha namathukumayumudavu.
May God's holy name be glorified.
Idhumaathramala.
Not only this.
Na idhavarki thonadha repeatpannikiyada varavulak.
And I am repeating everything.
Seivaa.
The Lord will do.
Seidhar.
And the Lord did.
Sehiraa.
The Lord is doing.
Seivaa.
And the Lord will do.
Seidharade nindru pa.
And you stand and see what the Lord for you.
Seidharade naan onaka arivipen.
And I will proclaim and see what is going to do.
Ipadutthu, varamariyivadha.
And nextly, in a different way.
Ni periyakariyengalai seivaa.
And ye shall do great things.
Yaar mulamayala, kattar onnakondeseyavu guraa.
And not someone, the Lord is doing to do great things through you.
Onnu samuvel.
First Samuel.
Iravatiyaru.
Chapter twenty-six.
Iravatiyayinde.
Verse twenty-five. An enemy of father-in-law, and looking unto the son-in-law, he said like this, "And thou shalt do great things, and stand and prevail, and ye shall do a great things."
Kolavandame, ipa blessing kodukara, asirvadan kodukara.
And he who came to kill him, the Lord gives him a blessings.
Ah, adhana enna de?
And what is that?
En, magane, ni asidurikapattavan.
And my son, thou art blessed.
Ah, ni periyakariyengalai seivaa.
Thou shalt do great things.
Kattar inimel da, abishagamanapattan unmulamay, kattar periyakariyengalai unmulamay seyavu guradha, ni seivaa.
And ye who are anointed, the Lord is going to do great things through you, and ye shall do great things.
Idhukparaagada savuludya mudiyu varugirudh.
And then after, there comes an end for Saul.
Idhukparaagada, taavidu singhassanathukayara.
Only then after, and David climbed to the throne.
Inneleru, ni periyakariyengalai seivaa.
From right today, and ye shall do great things.
Ungalakku sattrukalku oru mudiyu undagura oru nairam.
And this is time for the enemies of the fallen kings.
Ni kattar kahasayen.
And you must do for God.
Ni abishagamanapattavanaaranda, kattar kaga ni kriyaseivaa.
If you are anointed person and you will work for God.
Namakadukka tagdiirka.
Are we qualified?
Devanaka, edhayadu seyyanamukka tagdiirka.
And so are we qualified to do things unto God?
Oru tirkadrisi, orathanapathu, aludukiteerana.
A prophet had looked at a person and cried like this.
Abba onjona, edukkanga alukiringe, enak chali chiboche, nige edukka alukirin, solamiyaya alukiringe, abdine katam.
And said that, and so I got vexed and weary, and so why do you cry?
Ni seyavu gurapperiyakariyata pathu, naaludukitturukkaran.
And looking unto the great things that you are going to perform, I cry.
Abba onjona, naane orusetanai, naan pooye enangaj seyamudiyo.
And I am a dead dog, and what I am going to do?
Adhena?
And what is that?
Rendrajaakal, ettamadikarao, padimuntra vasana.
Second Kings, chapter eight, verse thirteen. And Hesel said that, "And what what thy servant a dog, that he should do a great thing?"
Anavijona, illa, kattar onamulamadham periyakariyengalai seyavu guradha.
But the Lord, and he said, "And the Lord has going to do a great thing through you."
Ni yara arnadalusari, evva thaldan nalavarathal arnadalusari, evva kattan nalavarathal arnadalusari, evva nirpanthamana sulalayaradalusari, kattar unnakondu periyakariyengalai seyavu guraa.
And whoever you may be, and you may be a lowly state, and you may be a miserable person, but the Lord is going to do great things through you.
Asagel oru sadarnapoor veeran.
And Hesel, and he was a normal warrior.
Pinberajaavukka talabodiyaka marina.
And then after, he became a captain for the king.
Anal orunal, avanaka oru vaartay vandadha.
But one day he got a word.
Anekadavatavarambodan solradha, nae enkanga rajavahamudiyo.
And so when he got a word, he asked, "And how can I become a king?"
Adutthanaalavayaara marida.
And next day, how he was?
Rajavamari da.
And he became a king.
Onjona, naayaaki, naan yamathron, onjona, evva periyakariyadhi, indanaya ochasiyavuringen katam.
And so.
Kattar avanakondu periyakariyengalai seyadu, avanay rajavay matchinaar.
And he asked, "And I am a dog, are you going to do great things through this dog?" But next day, the Lord lifted him and did great things through him.
Inneki tolviyum, pinmatthangal, vilugigal, tadumathangal, palavidamana kattugal, malavidamana, ilavilugigal, ni tadumari kondurukala. Anal kattar indrikindha koodathal onodu pesugiradha, unnakondu, naan periyakariyengalai seyavu guran.
And you may be stumbling, and you may be fall, in different kinds of ways and path, but the Lord says, "And from right today, I am going to do great things through you."
Ellaavutthukum mela.
About all.
Kattar sehiram, migavum periyakariyam enna?
And what is the exciting great thing the Lord performs?
Naan modalavudhu sonnen.
Firstly, I said.
Ningal naanu rachikapattadu periyakariyam.
And it is a great thing that we got seen.
Randavudhu.
Secondly.
Kadaisiyanapperiyakariyam.
And Lord's great thing.
Kattar namukoru vittakattaporadha, adhama periyakariyam.
The Lord is going to construct or build up a house.
Namukparlavathal oru edamirukkardha, adhama periyakariyam.
There is a great place in heaven, that is a great thing.
Rachipu mukkiyamala, puranamukkiyam.
And salvation is not important, and perfection is very important.
Randesamuvel.
Second Samuel.
Elavadikarao.
Chapter seven.
Iravatiyora vasana.
Verse twenty-one.
Randesamuvel, yel, iravatiyondre.
According to thine own heart and has done unto great things to make thy servant know them.
Adhene enna periyakariyam?
And what is the great thing?
Padinora vasana solugirudh.
Verse eleven says.
Onakkun naan vittay undubonuvay.
And I will make a house for you.
Indavatthayakaata oranaya, apriyaa adiputam.
And so hearing this verse, and he was shaken.
Avanaka inda olagatila maaligakalirukkardha.
And he has many matches with the house.
Ane ippi cholla pattavvii, naan onakkor vittakattuvay, nilayana vittay onakkor kattuvay, kattar onakkor vittay undubonvaran, sonnadi enna de?
And what is the thing the Lord said, "And I will build up a house for you, at your house," and so what is a house which is mentioned here?
Enna de? Palayarpattla parlavathapati person, orayaliyartha? Parlohunkavaththi useppanna orayaliyartha? Taavidumadha?
And who is the only person and who said a word about heaven is David.
Ipavantda solradha, naan onakkor vittakattuvay.
And now the Lord said to him, "And I will build up a house."
Adakkaata onne solta, inimel enakke jebame kadeyada.
And hearing this, I said, "And there is no more prayer."
Ini omadathal, enakke kakkaradhuk vinnapame illa, vegu kaalathuk pinnalal, oru seidi, angkaadukake solitiga, adhyanakku podu, onsona.
And said that, "And after a long time, and you make a word to tingle in my ears, and that is sufficient."
Patthamoravasana vasinga?
And read verse nineteen. And thou hast spoken thy servant house for a great while to come, and this is the man, rough man, and so what worth the I am to do this?
Iravasana.
Verse twenty. Though I had many failures in my life, and David said, "And there is no other thing, great thing you are going to do in my life, and you promised to do or fulfill in my life."
Rachipu mukkiyamala, puranamukkiyam.
And so salvation is not important, and perfection is very important.
Parlogasabakulla sarvasangamagi, andesabakulla ni poiseran.
It is not a great thing to come to this congregation, and we have to enter into the whole congregation of heaven.
And janathodu ni po, niyum naanum seravain.
And we have to join with the people there that got perfection.
Indrikio onakkuperiyakariyengalai seyamudiyaka, alaitthavar, seyidhundrakkaravar, unnakondu periyakariyengalai sehiravar, onakkaga paramaveetay, andapperiyakariyate, onakkaga seyadu, oni adhale sertukolvar.
And the Lord who called you and done the great things for you, and he will take you to the heavenly house or heavenly canon and will take you unto glory.
Ellargankalay moduva.
Let us all close our eyes.
Namukorupperiyakariyate kattara ayathapaditikondurukkara.
And the Lord prepares a great thing for us.
Kaivele alladha, nitthiyaveeda.
And though that is the work of that without hands, an internal house. Sure house.
Vegu kaalathuk pinbuulavu oru kariyam.
And the time that is after the great while of time.
Ipogoda anega uliyakaranasayonla, itrana numberu vedan enakken solradha.
And even many servants of God, they are telling, "And this is the number of my house."
Enak aachirima arukku.
And so I am able to hear this.
Lachchati napathinaalayathle, yaan number idhu, abdine solradha, uliyakaran, addichesolradha, vallaraka, enak kattar onakke darasana kodukurukar, velipadatal kodukurukkara.
And thereof servants of God, they say very surely, and among hundred and forty-four lakhs thousand, they says that, "And this is the number of my house."
Jerusalemla ona vittenga rukkutirima?
And do you know where is a house in Jerusalem?
Ah, andavadipamana sthanathalani, enndarathalirupay.
And so I am such beauty house, and where you will stay?
Velipadathiriravataramadikaratla, adu oru saduramano oru nahramp.
And so in twenty-one Revelation, it says that, "And it is the job of the whole city."
Adha onakkor vittiruke.
And there is a house for you.
Adhendeviddanapar.
And check, which is your house?
Onvittin tarpode, ennalarameenna.
And what is the present state of your house?
Taavidu solugiran.
And David says.
Enakor vittay undubonuvay, solitiga, adhupo dvanavare.
And thou said, "And I will build up a house for you, and that is sufficient and enough for me."
Adhama periyakariyam.
And that is a great thing of God.
Naan varuvay.
And I'll come.
Onenidathil sertukolva.
I will gather you unto me.
Naan ayathamani rukkaraedhatil, oni marubidhi, ondesertukolven, niggara, than sabaki devan kodutha vaartai.
And this is a promise unto the church, the Lord says, "And I will take up to the place which I promised you."
Pillakaduchidhu, veedukaduchidhu, aadukaduchidhu, maadukaduchidhu, faitam kattnam, veedukattnam, uleyenjanja, idhala, naan onakkor vittakattuvay, adhama periyakariyam.
And so I have nourished my family and church and did all these things, this is not a great thing. I will build up the great house for you, and that is a great thing of God.
Kattar namukupperiyakariyengalai seidhar.
And the Lord did great things for you.
Naamagilndukali koorukurao.
And we are a joy, and we are glad.
Ipannadakkarudh enna?
And what is the thing happening now?
Porajadigalsolano.
And the Gentiles must say.
Kattar ivargalakku periyakariyengalai seidhar.
And the Lord has done great things for them.
Etanavira abdibanjikiringe?
And how many of you desire this?
Naamasolikittin, namalekatiitikakaradha, ala?
It's not a thing that we say and we lament.
Kattar enakupperiyakariyam seidhar, aleliya, aleliya, solradha, ala?
It is not a great thing.
Oneneshutthirukkaran, solano, kattar ivanakupperiyakariyam seidhar.
And neither thou or around you must see, and the Lord hath done great things for them.
Onsondangalsolano.
And your relatives must see.
Onnanbergalsolano.
Your friends should see.
Onkramon solano.
And your village must see.
Onvellasalathal solano.
The place where you are working, they must see.
Ye, un sattrukalku porajadigalsolano, kattar ivargalakku periyakariyengalai seidhar.
And why, your Gentiles, your enemies must see, the Lord hath done great things for them.
Indrikindha namukka devan, periyakariyam seyim devanai vandurukkara.
And today, our God come in our midst as a God of doing great things.
Viswasiyikaravu, andapperiyakariyam mahimay padutanga.
And they that believe and lift up and glorify our great God.
Devan rachittha.
And the Lord saved us.
Abishagamaninaa.
I know it, it is.
Olilulaparushuthavangade, solandarathal kondundu vaittha.
And kept us to be the particles and the signs of light.
Ipoldu onakkaga oru periyakariyengalai seyidhundrakkar.
And right now, the Lord is doing great things for you.
Bayapadada.
And fear not.
Innumpperiyakariyengalai seivaa.
And do will the great things for you.
Oruppinmari abishagunai sandikkam.
La late rain will come and ease you.
Ni asidurikapattavanaay maruvay.
And thou shalt become a blessing.
Yelandu bodadhiyala onakkutirumbakadekka.
And what you lost, you will restore.
Enjanangal oru bodo, vekkapadu bovadhiyala.
My people never be ashamed.
Amen. Ni nindru parka pooraaai.
And you are going to stand and see.
Kattar onaka sehirapperiyakariyengalai.
And the great things the Lord has done for you.
Viswasiyikaravu, thudhithchilitikke derunga.
And they that believe keep praising God.
Enenoki koopadu.
Call unto me.
Periyakariyengalai naan onaka arivipen.
I will make you know a great things.
Unvarungalam.
Your future.
Unpilligaludhey varungalam.
The future of your children.
Unooliyathin birkalam.
And future of your ministry.
Kattar naan onakellavatyarivipen.
And I will make you know everything.
Naan onakku sugathke taruvay.
I will give you healing.
Naansaukyamakum yehova.
And I am the Lord Jehova, give you healing.
Naan yehova rafa.
I am Jehova Rafa.
Naane unbarigari.
I am the healer.
Naan onakkusaukyati, aro ketti, varapanduvay.
I will bring you healing and strength.
Amen. Naan unnakondu periyakariyengalai seyavu guradha.
I am going to do great things through you.
Ipora abishagathodu mudike pora.
And now we are going to end up with anointing.
Adhenabishagam?
And what's that anointing?
Unnakondu kattar periyakariyengalai seyavu guravu abishagam.
The anointing to do great things through you.
Oneodu, kattar, periyakariyengalai arivika kodiya, oru abishagam.
The anointing to Lord, to make know you the great things.
Kattar sehirapperiyakariyengalai, nindru parka kodiya, oru abishagam.
The anointing to stand and see, the Lord's great thing.
Enakku parlavathil oru udai edam undu, enkara, nichayathin abishagam.
The anointing to make you sure, "I have a place in heaven."
Etanavirakanda abishagantava? And how many are in need of such anointing? Our God is a great God. And the Lord is going to do great things. And surely the Lord is going to great things and manifest you. And receive that anointing. Amen. Amen. In the presence of the Lord, what is the word that belongs to you? Is the word, the Lord did great things. And he does or he is doing the great thing at present. Oh, the certain word, the Lord will do great things. Are you saying that this is the word that I shall stand and see the great thing of God? Are you saying that this is the word that belongs to me and he said that and the word that known I will let it in? Or are you seeing the word that the Lord said and ye shall do the great thing? Or are you saying that is a great thing, the Lord is going to build up a house in heaven for me? And the Lord is sitting in a mount and he is doing the great thing for us. And from right today, the Lord saying will be the great thing for you. Amen. And has asked unto God, and what an awed dog to do the great things. And so when he humped himself. When the grace of God filled him. The Lord did great things through him. How many of you are delivering and submitting unto God? Oh, people of God, and there is a great thing for the Lord to perform through you. Amen. 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 In the presence of the Lord, what is the word that belongs to you? And Hazel asked unto God, and what an awed dog to do the great things. And so when he humped himself. When the grace of God filled him. The Lord did great things through him. How many of you are delivering and submitting unto God? Oh, people of God, and there is a great thing for the Lord to perform through you. And refrain me not from my praise. And cast me not from your presence. But when the anointing was renewed to him. And the Lord confirmed him. There is a place for you. And what a beautiful God, our goddess. He who is standing on knees do not fear, there is a place for you. And there is a place for you in him. And be courageous. The Lord is going to do great things. And he that called you is faithful. There is a crown. Amen. Amen. How many are having this certainty? And simply you should not say what I say. I was somewhere. I was on dust on earth. And he brought me from that place. I am weak. I am fool. And I am the person who did above minimal things. But the Lord who called me is holy. I am not faithful. He is faithful. There is a purpose for the Lord to bring me. Surely he will take me to that place. And that is a great thing. Hallelujah! And so don't think that the Lord will do something and cannot return back. And with means and you sing the song with belief. And surely I will attain. I have a crown. No enemy can come and harm this. And from the Lord's hand. I will receive the midst of the angels. Amen. And the struggles that you face right today. The problems or situations that you go through today. And the sickness and sickbed that you face today. All these. And the devil is bringing that you should not enter into that house. Not I will go there. I will receive a crown myself from my Lord's hand. Challenge devil and say this. Crown for me! Hallelujah!